It's my pleasure to be here together with you to share some of our experience and our historical journey. As you know, the Sigo Vietnam, our Sigo Group, we are the Swiss leading company on the EMS industry, electronic management service. So we have worldwide 2,002,000,000 employees and almost 15 locations worldwide. We are fast and they are very competitive to compare to Ho Chi Minh City or another city in Asia. So it's the second thing that will blow up the kingdom here. And within only in 22 days. So that is quite impressive because we cannot make what we do in Germany with the speed like that. But I think I can move in detail, which I will detail without time.
Okay, thank you. Then I want to move to Dr. Lo. You are the one to start a smart city project in the first beginning and you must be very proud that your baby has been such a success now. So can you talk more about how you started and what you have achieved so far?
Firstly, to be clear, I got permission from Peter as a new promise to be here today to share some of our experience we have. But of course, I have to be clear that I'm here to share more of my own opinion as long as I have the problem. I'm just sharing my science. And I have a chance to follow the project 7 years ago, 8 years ago with people from ICOM. Peter here is one of the key person and under the direction of the leaders and also BACAMEX support. And we joined ICF through ICOM. And also we are close with our partner from Taiwan. And also we're in many other economies besides BACAMEX. Also many from the university join the project. And we are happy to get the most compliment award from ICF. So it's a sharp contribution. And maybe after we have a time, I can discuss more.
You think you can kill Peter? You just got awarded on the stage. So you all want to bring Binhong to ICF and you have a promise to build up this smart city till now. So can you introduce well and Hoffen to National Culture Office and your peers that working with Binhong and BACAMEX all the way?
Well, first of all, and also my congratulations to everybody in this room, who are also part of the team that eventually made this success happen. So it's not always a few people. It's many people. I was in this room many times for operations committee meetings, meeting with all the directors and other partners of the OC steering committee. So I think that's first. Second is that when Binhong received the award last month, it was the second time for me because I was in the United States in 2011 when Eindhoven was awarded the same award. So I know from the past that any award will always give help you to become and build pride in the society and also pride in the international community. The next day after Eindhoven was awarded, The New York Times wrote about this and said, "Will this be the next Silicon Valley?" And obviously, to Eindhoven, we know we are not the next Silicon Valley. But it gave us a lot of attention and it helped us to spread our message on the way we were developing Eindhoven in these days. And it was like 8 years ago that a delegation from Binhong visited Eindhoven and got inspired by a small city because Eindhoven, the hometown of Philips and his well, is still a small city. And we always say if you're small, you have to be smart in the way you work and the way you develop. So we learned the hard way. Because Eindhoven was also going through economic bad times at the late 90s, how we could work together in a better way. And as mentioned already, we learned how working together between government, academia, and also the mid-private business could improve and help us to enhance the development of our region. And I think that was one of the ideas that really inspired Binhong leadership, visionary leadership, I would say, because it needs visionary people to adapt and to allow reference and experience from other countries to be deployed in your own province. And then that day, I think that laid the foundation for the success that we are discussing and also celebrating today.
Thank you. So I totally agree with you that it always take a village to make things happen, but just a few people. So my next is John. I was about to ask you to introduce about ICF, but since this is already your third panel in the morning, so I think all people should know more about ICF. But how about talk more about how ICF support Binhong to be the intelligent community leader?
First of all, let me say that I was thrilled to be able to be on this panel because this panel, even though I've already visited Vietnam, it could have been since September, it's only my second trip. I feel like I know people here like family. You know, it's wonderful. I feel very welcome. And this panel is a lot of friends. I met this gentleman just in September. We know Maggie from Taiwan for years. Peter, of course, and Wong, we've known him for many, many years. So this is part of what ICF is about. It's about family. It's about being close to people and developing relationships. And I think it's what's happening on this stage. We are like friends, not just partners. I think that's an important part of relationship building, which is a key fundamental of economic development, but also of community development as we move forward. So what does ICF do and how did ICF relate to Binhong? Well, you have to self-actualize this. We don't go and search out the communities. They have to come to us and let us know that these are things happening around the world. And what we've learned through people like Wong coming to our conferences and learning from best practices. We've learned of Binhong and we encourage them to make an application. After they made the application, we investigated further. And I have to say, after many years of investigation, you earn this. We didn't just give it to you. You earn this. And that's a key, that a community comes from the people who are here, the decisions that you've made, the strategies that you've developed, the people you reach out to, like ICOM and ICOM with Peter and those. And then the kinds of things that you do to make the decisions through your leadership, to be able to create the best that you can in creating quality of life for your citizens and for your community moving forward. I have to congratulate you. I think that Binhong is a wonderful best practice that we are now going to tell the rest of the world. And you need to also do the same. You need to market, leverage what you've now been able to achieve and let the world know that this is the place to come. Invest it, live in, and help to create a better future.
I really like what you mentioned and what others mentioned because we all heard from John that they got the support from ICF, they got the support from Ho Chi Minh, they got the support from Taiwan and all the nation. But you just mentioned they earned it because they themselves, they also do a lot of effort to make it happen. So I really like this idea and yeah, you deserve it, John. So my next question for John, that why intelligent community? Why you not just use smart cities? So you choose intelligent communities or other differences?
So everybody's heard of smart cities. In fact, in some parts of the world, they don't want to hear the word smart cities anymore. The idea of smart cities is all about technology. And you look at connections, broadband, you look at developing measurement, with data, and then applying it for decision making in order to create convenient, more efficient city that people are part of. But that's how you should use that as just a foundation by creating a quality of life. So we don't use the term smart cities. We use the term intelligent communities because we want to differentiate between the technology, which is really smart cities, and what we refer to as intelligent communities where people are the focus. And that's why we suggest that after you have broadband and data and then analyze the decision making, you take a look at how you can apply it so that people can create knowledge workers. The kind of talent that you have achieved here was universities like Eastern International University and others, that you develop entrepreneurship practices, even in primary school and high schools, that you create training in the industries that you have in this community so that you can break it to another level. As mentioned earlier, once you have smart cities and smart people, that can help you and you can grow as a result of that, then prosperity means to be shared with everyone. So we talk about inclusion, how to include everyone as part of that prosperity. We encourage engagement and therefore we're talking about citizen participation in all of those decisions. And then finally, we look for how do we take all of that and create sustainable, resilient, revitalized communities? That's all the intelligent people work, not just smart cities.
Yeah, very good. When I was in ICF summit this October, there was a panel talking about how the technology can help your people. So all the CIO are on the panel and they keep talking. It's not about the technology. It's not an issue for technologies, it's an issue for people. So I think exactly what you mentioned about that. So my next question will go to Peter. Peter, you just mentioned that and Hoffen was also one of the intelligent community in 2011. So you have a lot of experience that exactly the same with Binhong. So that's why you think you can inspire them. And I think that's also the reason that you introduced the ICF accelerator strategy for them. So but you are from a European company and Binhong is an Asian company. So there must be some different issues. So can you talk about why do you think these ICF accelerators strategies feel suitable for Binhong and what other results?
One of the things about ICF is that ICF uses a mechanism that you can use to measure yourself and to see where you are compared to other cities in the world. It's like a kind of self-assessment to see where do we good and where do we have to improve. It's called the six indicators. So at the early days, we used this to introduce the mechanism of also checking and balancing what, how has Binhong done so far and which areas do we have to improve. And I learned that every city in the world is open to see how we can do better for our people and also for our community and business. So that is a kind of universal ambition that every other world people want to make progress. But the way you make progress has to be a smart way which is adapted to the needs of modern times. That means if you think about urban development or about the master planning of a project like Binhong, you have to think ahead about what are we doing today and where are we going tomorrow? What is the infrastructure we need today? But also how should we already look ahead 10 years from now? What we can expect? As we all know, the resource, human resource and space are more and more getting scarce. So we have to be more selective. How can we use the scarce space we have? And also how can we make best use and offer perspective to all the people who work here in Binhong? These are the elements that are important today. The other thing might have from my experience from Eindhoven that if you win an award, it's not the end of the game. It's mostly the start because Binhong has not yet finished and we have not reached every goal. So I consider this kind of award is a good achievement for what we have done. But it is more pushing us to do better in the future. Because we all know here together that there are also in Binhong many challenges we have to cope with and that we have to improve. And also at the national level in Vietnam, we're doing good and economically, we still do reasonably good at the 5% to 6% GDP rate. And at the same time, we know that also Vietnam have challenges to see and to adapt to international geopolitical situation. So I think that is the ongoing change where we have to be adaptive. And that is one of the things we have discussed here in Binhong as well, that today we can no longer make plans for 10 or 20 years. Economic and geopolitical circumstances are changing so fast that it is a big ability if we can adapt to that fairly fast. And that is one of my learnings, that especially in Binhong is open to learn and also open to be more flexible to make use of these changing conditions.
Yeah, very good. And I got two takeaways from what you just mentioned. The first one is it is also the same with what I learned from the panel yesterday. We need to value the measurement, not to major the value. So this is quite important. I think this is also like John, you always talked about. And you know, a lot of city, they join the ICF forum and they are awarded as the smart city one and maybe they are awarded as the top seven. They may stop because they may think about, okay, that's enough for me. Top one, smart top one is enough for me, top seven is enough for me. Even though they may be the top one, the intelligent community, they stop going to join the event, but it is not correct. You still need to go because things change all the way. Just as Peter mentioned, that we need to go all the way so that we collect all the different needs so we can grow by ourselves. So my next question to Dr. Lo. Dr. Lo, we met in 2017. So since then, I learned from you that you introduced about the triple HADX model. So can you talk more about this collaboration, triple HADX model, and how it helped the development in your smart city with Binhong?
I would like to share, you know, Binhong, yeah. Before, we have a very good industrialization. And about time, we know how to collaborate between government and enterprises. So it's already dual, dual HADX. And then now we move to another level. It's not classical manufacturing anymore. We want to bring knowledge, bring technology into the economy, social economy. Then we have to bring the deep modern institution of that is universities, R&amp;D. So that is a reason why we bring another partner into dual HADX and now become triple HADX. And that is almost the only way to really transform our economy from classical manufacturing to be a more knowledgeable economy, more high-tech economy. So that's the way why we try to apply this in the world. We are very happy to learn that from Ho Chi Minh. Of course, it's a theory from the US, but Ho Chi Minh apply is very successful. And we have very nice, you know, ideas and many nice ideas and competition experience from them. And then we also join ICF and we know how many cities in the world use exactly the same model. Of course, today, people start to think about not only triple HADX, it can be quadruple HADX or even more, multi-HADX. But of course, with our level now, we start with triple HADX first and then whether we can increase or upgrade our model. And like today, you can see in this room or in the conferences, we, of course, it's more about investment, about training. But we also invited many people from science, from technology. And Mr. Science and Technology is here today is also one of nice example of how can we, how we focus on technology and science to really great our economy, its social economy now.
Yeah, you just mentioned a good example of how you earn this intelligent community because you are not just set out a model. You keep working on it to bring things into it, to make it happen, to make it better. So my next question will go to Lo. That smart manufacturing or industrial for that zero is a very popular topic for now. And I trust your company has prepared for this way earlier than other companies. And I would like to invite you to share about this transition process and the deal with process. Do you face any challenging? And you are in Binhong. Does Binhong help in this area?
Yeah, that's quite a really interesting question. So first of all, I would like to share our experience by Sigo Vietnam. So for sure, we are the electronic contract manufacturing. So that's mean every set count. We have to install industrial for point zero roboting, even though the kind of lean management to make our factories smart because we have almost four factory here in Vietnam. So we are the key relation in Asia to provide almost turnover profit back to the group. But another head is we just work with the local university, the Eastern International University to attract the talent, the engineer, fresh engineer from the university because they are very young, dynamic, and willing to learn. So the thing is, if I hire someone from Intel or from another Samsung, whatever, in IP area, so the green is really hard, they are not willing to go back to Binhong. So we have to work with the local university here, not only Eastern International University. We work with Vietnam, German university here in Binhong as well. So therefore, we have a pipeline, a pool of talents which we can train here in Vietnam and make them commit for the next two year by Sigo Vietnam and send them back to Switzerland in Montreux to learn and adapt the knowledge or the know-how from our Swiss engineering and move back to Vietnam. So that means we have very interesting competitive mix compilation of engineering services, that's one thing. Another hand is we have to create some innovation because you know, if we stay in the same place, we always move back. So I think we invested to the printing electronics. So for example, on the normal plastic surface, if you print the sensor or ME or FIP chips on it, so that's make the surface smarter. And that is some kind of the green thinking of electronics. So you cannot do the simple conduct of electronics by 40 years ago. Now we print the electronics on the phone. And the phone, you know, is just very cheap. So the thing that you use printing machine, you can print 160 meters of it. So that's the reason why you can make the electronics cheap whatever you want and not on the location. And that's some kind of technology or high-tech we would like to transfer, bring back to Binhong because I think Binhong is the most succeed why we think that the future of the smart factory or smart production or smart city or smart government and smart universities. At the end of the day, we have smart communities. That is that, you know, Jun, Mr. Jun told us before. So but the most important thing is we got really strong support from local government in Binhong. We got the personal support from Mr. Hong from BACAMEX. We got the support of Mr. Dean from marketing department from BACAMEX. I'm truly like welcome whatever we suppose or problem challenging we have or facing, we just talk with them and we can solve within 24 hours. So quite impressive. So I encourage the almost of German and Swiss business community to enter to Binhong, to participate on this smart ecosystem which Binhong City already established here.
You are really a good representative to Binhong to attract more companies coming in fast, same time in Vietnam because you mentioned about workforce and innovation. Because you know, when we are talking about transformation, there are many factors that we need to consider. And definitely that workforce and innovation is very important either to rethink the organization or the internal environment. And Binhong is thinking of the same thing that they have creating an innovation ecosystem for their partners here. So and you just mentioned that they're doing very well. So when they're very have problem, they are willing to solve this. So it's kind of that they are really providing a very good environment and very good program for the industrial needs here. So can you talk more about this? Or can you give us some really simple cases that you experience this kind of advantage? So that the other companies, they may think about that they can come here and in fact, Binhong to establish their company, the manufacturer. But what kind of support they can get from Binhong?
So first of all, you know, before when I moved back to Vietnam to work as the Asian director of Sigo Vietnam, the my former MD just named our Sigo like Sigo Anam. And the name Anam, I don't like it because it's a few people back in the year if you're friends colonial a town, they polished. So that I don't want. So we would like to change this from the prior view of our Sigo Group agreed to do it. So but how we can align with the local government? How we can change it quickly? But because you know, another country like the Asia, you're not able to do it. Yeah, or in Malaysia, we have a problem with that. So but within, I think, three months, we finish with the rename now from Sigo Anam back to Sigo Vietnam. And this make me happy and our people as well because we are part to work for Sigo Vietnam, not for Anam. For the, we have some of history background which I don't want to mention here. But the most of people know it is about it. That is the first positive thing. Second thing that I'm really impressed is, you know, we bought the four factory. So we have the three factory already and the next one, 7,000 square. The acquisition process is still very quick. The permission is really quick. So at the end of the day, we are able to have the opening ceremony in this year. Even we just jump into the March 2023. In June, we can make the opening ceremony. So that is quite impressive. So our stuff need only 24 days to relocate the whole entire of SMT equipment, all entire of high-tech equipment, smart cars, everything, etc. Back to the new location. And in the meantime, to build the clean room, to do clean room, 20 days. So for sure, I'm thinking in Germany, we're not able to do it. You know, I'm leading more than 35 years in Germany. I never saw or see any project with a move really quick like that. We work is from Monday to Sunday and the local government support us with the permission. So I get the permission really quick. So that is the two major positive experience we have in Binhong. But nevertheless, beside the positive experience, something I would like to suggest, city Binhong should have some of like German high schools somehow so that my children can stay here, build a school here and I can, with me to live in the district too in the Ho Chi Minh City. Otherwise, I can sit for almost one hour back and forward, you know? That is one thing. The second thing is missing here is some of the event for the business community like in Ho Chi Minh City, we do with the turbo fest, beer fest, something like that. It's very simple, it's very easy. But if Binhong invest something like that or organizes something like that, for sure, I'm not the only one expert who need Binhong. Thank you.
It's really impressive, you know, one way to think of layer. You just mentioned it's very important that if you work in a country that you have a local contact. I think, yeah, it's a universal idea that you need to have a local contact with the local government. But I'm quite impressive, the local support here from Binhong is really useful. Yeah, very good example. So next, I want to hear from John. John, you know that for when you to review to evaluate the intelligent community, you have different category. And I trust workforce and innovation must be some of the items that you feel. So can you talk more about how you see Binhong doing in these two topic? Yeah, we are talking about workforce and innovation. So these are the two major topic for the city to do the transformation also when you are selected or evaluated intelligent community. So for your point of view, you also have to set model for. So for your point of view, you also have to set a model for Binjung. What do you think about their doing in terms of the workforce and innovation?
So those are very important topics. Can you hear me? Very important topics as part of the intelligent community indicators. You were just talking about workforce in Minyung. If you are having issues at all about developing proper educational opportunities, the idea of bringing in international schools is, I think, an appropriate way to do this. We have seen this. You know, I worked in the Shanghai area and brought in American and Canadian schools into those areas. And what they do is they then create an international environment, but also they then stay and participate in, participate in most cases in the Shanghai environment. The development of innovative hubs and the idea of creating ecosystems around that is a very important piece of creating not only the ecosystem but a place in which the community can develop with the kids, with the universities, with the school system. You know, and it's also around the future of work. And that is a very important part of how communities are. I think one of the other things, our friends from ITO abroad, that is looking at the whole triple helix, are bringing business into the discussion, bringing government into the discussion, and also bringing academia and citizen groups into it. I think as time goes on, we're going to need to see more and more of these kinds of mixed environments having a dialogue around how the future of work is going to exist in the future. So I think that we need all of those participants to work in a collaborative way to bring out these new ideas and to engage in making those new environments happen. They don't happen overnight. They don't happen singularly. They happen as a collaborative engagement of all these purpose. And I think one of the best examples is what our friends in ITO.
Steve Chong mentioned it, Peter?
One of the, I had the honor of hosting your PM visit last year to ITO because he was inspired by the cooperation between Binjung and ITO. And we showed him around the Brainwork Industries campus, which is what we call the Factory of the Future. Because no longer in the future, we will see large single companies building their factories, but there will be a trend that large companies will work together closely with many of their suppliers in the supply chain. And at present, in the world, you can see many changes in these supply chains. A lot of companies in China, in Taiwan, and other countries are reconsidering whether they stay only in China or if they have to move their operations in what we call China plus one or Taiwan plus one strategies to Vietnam, Thailand, and other Asian countries. That will require a different type of facility we can provide. These companies want to move fast. They are not all the biggest like Samsung, but they're especially medium-sized suppliers. They want to start fast. And they want to find a place where they can sit together or work together in this type of supply chain. So this Factory of the Future is also based on the triple helix. In the Factory of the Future in ITO, you will find vocational college, local medium-sized tech suppliers, and all kind of expert centers around 3D printing and also 4G, Industry 4.0 expertise, so that medium-sized companies can also deploy advanced technologies that will keep them also competitive in the global challenge of the world becoming more innovative. So the triple helix is also transferred into the business side where business realizes that without proper education on the end or on site, it will be difficult to deploy the right people with the right skills for the needs they have. And I think that is also one of the concepts we are looking at in Minyung. So no longer looking at only these big companies building big factories and large plots of land, but also looking for solutions that we can maybe provide ready-to-run solutions with all the facilities that help them to make a quick start if they move from other countries.
Okay. So it's my pleasure to be here together with you to share some of our experience and our historical journey. As you know, that Sico Vietnam, or Sico Group, we are the Swiss leading company on the EMS, Industrial Electronic Management Service. So we have worldwide 2,000 and 273 degree and almost 50 locations worldwide.